No.
Hi Sheila.
Hi Judy.
Hi there, I'm actually on time, I think.
Oh my goodness.
There's surprises never cease.
Surprises do not ever cease, actually, that's what I've found.
Well Sheila, we are sure gonna miss you.
Well, thank you, I'm gonna miss you guys too. I mean, this is a very thoughtful, serious, but fun board. You know, we have good, good conversations, I think.
Well, mostly from you, actually. I would say over fifty percent.
Well, I don't know, I, you know, one of the things that I, people used to always kid me about was, one of the questions I would ask before I joined a board was, how do you get to be Chair? Because I, I got so tired of people who didn't know how to chair and, you know, the meetings would drag on forever, or they would talk every other person, or whatever, which could be a problem I have as well. But I, I love, you know, sort of guiding a board through, really kind of saying what they think. And, you know, this is quite unusual, it's just really a great board.
Well, you've done a great job of guiding, for sure. Absolutely couldn't have done it better, and I don't know what we're gonna do without you.
Well, you know, memories are short, and after a while, it'll just seem like I was never even here.
No, not, not gonna happen. You are legend.
Oh yeah, I am a legend. Yeah, legend, he sees legends of tomorrow. But no superpowers.
Aw, I think so.
Oh, I don't know, I may discover some. I've often wanted to be able to zap people when I wanted to, but, you know, never, never happened.
Well, I'll send a few your way.
To zap? Yeah, I know, I've gotta list myself.
Yeah.
Well, this is good.
Confirming that we do currently have five voting members, if we would like to begin, but we are waiting for about four other members to log on.
Okay. Then we'll wait a minute before we begin, to give people a chance to log on. But, you know, I think I can call the meeting to order before we do the roll call, and Linda, ask you to read the instructions for those who want to give public testimony.
You're on mute.
Good afternoon, members of the board and public, before we begin today's meeting, I will be going over some important information. As you are aware, under AB 361, members of the First LA Board of Commissioners or staff may continue to participate in this meeting via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1st, 2024. And in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. Now regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comments. The first way is written public comments via email, and those must be submitted in advance of the meeting to my email at LVO@first5la.org by 1:30 PM the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting. And as a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. Any public comments emailed, received after 1:30 PM, will become a part of public records. Now during the meeting, public members can use the Q&amp;A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q&amp;A chat box before the item being commented on is presented. When submitting requests to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q&amp;A chat will be addressed in the order that they are received. Now, when the public member does hear his or her name being called, they will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. And after saying the name twice, that we don't hear you begin your public comment, we will go on to the next public comment. There will be two minutes allotted for each public comment before we move on to the next one. Now, before we begin today's meeting, please do note the following. To minimize background disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak. And to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time, and to ensure for a coherent dialogue, board members can use the hand raise or chat box function to express an interest in speaking, and I will coordinate with the Chair regarding the item that you would like to speak to. And with the exception of adjournment, which will be called on for by the Chair, a formal roll call will be done for all action items, and a reminder to all board members to take yourselves off mute prior to roll call. And finally, if technical assistance is required during the meeting, you can contact me at 213-276-9389, and I will connect you with IT. And with that, I will hand this meeting back to our Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Judy Abdo?
Here.
Astrid Hager?
Here.
Yvette Martinez?
Here.
Barbara Ferrer? Frank Ramos? Carol Segala?
Here.
Romalis Taylor?
Here.
Keisha Woods? Robert Byrd?
Here.
Carla Plitez Howell? Jaclyn McCroskey?
Here.
Deanne Tilton?
Here.
And Sheila Kuehl?
Here.
For Miss Present.
Thank you very much. The next item is to ask Council to report back on the Executive Committee Close Session on June 22nd. And there also was a close session today, but I will report out on that one at the beginning of my remarks. So, Council, will you report out on the June 22nd Close Session?
Yes Chair, thank you. So, the Executive Committee did meet on June 22nd for a close session under Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957E1. The title of the position is Executive Director, and from that meeting, there was no reportable action. And I will just say, for purposes of today's closed session for the full board, for purposes of the Brown Act and reporting out there under, and that one was held pursuant to, again, Government Code Section 54957 regarding the Executive Director. Under the Brown Act, there is no reportable action, but however, yes Chair, I'm aware that you have comments that you would like to share out from that executive, from that board session under Item 4.
Alright, thank you Council. The, the next item is our Consent Agenda, Item 3. Does any member wish to remove any item from consent? Hearing none, is there any public comment on Item 3?
There are no public comments on Item 3.
Alright, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar?
I will move that, this is Judy.
I'll second that, this is Astrid.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Astrid Hager? I see her hand. Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
Romalis Taylor?
Yes.
Keisha Woods?
Yes.
And Sheila Kuehl?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Alright, thank you very much. The, the next item, remarks by the Chair. Let me start by reading out, as was reported about closed session today, there was no reportable action. But I do want to say that the board met in closed session specifically to discuss the recommendations of the Executive Committee as to the process we will follow to recruit and hire First 5 LA's new Executive Director. The board gave the direction that we will conduct a broad search of both internal candidates and external candidates. To find an individual has both a deep knowledge of California and specific experience in Los Angeles County regarding our special population of children to keep the important work of the First 5 LA moving forward. We'll be voting later in this meeting as to whether to adopt a contract for the executive search firm. And the board also approved a job description, which will be made public. And Commissioners were asked to provide their thoughts about the position and the ideal candidate in informal discussion. We also looked at a timeline for the process, which fulfills the board's intent of naming a new Executive Director by early December before we take our normal break for the holidays. And per First 5 LA's succession plan, the Executive Committee will serve as the search committee, but every member of the board will of course have input into the selection of our next Executive Director. So that's the report out from closed session. And I have a few other thoughts for my remarks today. Little bit unrelated, but, you know, can be random from time to time. First of all, I want to acknowledge our Executive Director's announcement that she'll be retiring from First 5 LA at the end of the year. I have no doubt that there are gonna be many, many accolades and parties and meetings and, you know, just ways of letting Kim know how much we appreciate her. But I want to share, give him some feedback, is everybody on mute? Thanks. I wanted to share, Kim, how much, starting out, how much you're gonna be missed. I mean, we have plenty of time for this later, but I want to tell you, it's been really gratifying to sit next to you for most of the years that I did this, or virtually next to you for the past couple of years, and work on the thing that really drives the passion of our work, our children age zero to five. I was happy to recognize this in my own newsletter, and just want to thank you, Kim, and we'll talk more later about how much you'll be missed. And who knows, go fishing together. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the state budget. Because at the end of last month, Governor Newsom signed the budget for 2223, and we projected about a $308 billion spending plan using a little over $234 billion in state general funds. The finalized budget also shows about $37 billion in total reserves and utilizes what's called a surplus, which simply means it hadn't been budgeted for yet, of a hundred and one, a little over a hundred and one billion. So, the 2223 budget now in effect, because the fiscal year started on July 1, is actually the largest in the entire history of the state. And the first one to feature more than $300 billion in spending. So in terms of how First 5 LA fared, we actually did pretty well in a number of categories. Several of our highest advocacy priorities, including those shared during this year's Advocacy Day meetings with our lawmakers, got funding in the finalized budget. $157.3 million to continue to waive family fees for state subsidized childcare and preschool programs through the next fiscal year. $37.5 million ongoing to expand the really important California home visiting program, and $12.5 million ongoing to expand the equally important Black Infant Health Program. $10 million in 2223 one-time money, and $20 million ongoing, contingent on whether there are sufficient state resources in future years to provide children under the age of five with continuous Medi-Cal coverage, also an extremely critical item. $6.5 million in the current budget year, and $29.5 million in 2425 and ongoing, change the early start eligibility threshold from a 33% delay to a 25% delay. And also to highlight the role of fetal alcohol syndrome as a risk factor for developmental delays. Finally, I'd like to very briefly preview our final item this afternoon, Item 8, which is launching the very first review and refinement cycle of our 2020 to 2028 strategic plan. Kim, I know you're gonna speak a little bit more in depth after this, but this is a really important item, so I wanted to point it out as well. For all of you who helped develop and affirm the strategic plan, you remember it calls for a review every three years, and this will be the first review. Second, the analysis and presentation are really deep, and it's an excellent opportunity to ask ourselves, you know, what are the problems we're really wanting to solve? And how can we prioritize our work? Even to look at our North Star and ask ourselves, is this still what we want to prioritize? So, more of that later. Linda, are there any public comments for my remarks?
There are no public comments for your remark.
Okay, thank you. Let me then turn it over to our Executive Director, Kim Bilshay.
Thank you Sheila, and thank you for that lovely image of maybe going fishing together. I'm not sure if that's the first activity I would necessarily see either of us doing, but I'm confident that if we were doing it together, we'd have a lot of fun. And I'm hoping today will be a lot of fun. Because as the supervisor said, this is the first time we're gonna have an opportunity to execute on the strategic plan's provisions that call for every three years, a what we call Strategic Plan Review and Refinement Cycle. And so we're gonna learn, learn together. And I am deeply appreciative of the board in 2019 and the team that helped conceptualize and advance this work for incorporating this type of periodic review into our strategic plan. Because it, it, it does provide a very productive and constructive and no doubt challenging kind of forcing function in terms of inviting us to step back, to reflect on how things are going, what are we learning? Lift up some hard questions and consider where there are opportunities to further sharpen and strengthen our work for children and families. You're gonna be hearing from a number of team members who've been doing just that. And I really want to express my pride and appreciation to each of them, both certainly the people you'll hear from today, but other colleagues who have been working so hard to shape the clay of this presentation. But I'm just super proud of how the team hasn't shied away from asking some hard questions, inviting some complexity and messiness, and not shying away from issues that require some tough decisions within the organization and with the board broadly. So today, we're gonna hear from a number of our leaders in the organization who are gonna be uplifting some important learning. They're gonna be raising some important questions and issues. And we want to share with you some initial thinking about how we can further refine and sharpen our focus and our contribution to impact. As you listen and engage, and we're eager for the board's engagement, I want to lift up four specific issues for us to keep in mind. First, and, you know, the board has recognized this, and the broader community has recognized this, First 5 LA is an organization that has gone through and continues to go through a really significant shift in our strategic focus. Shifting from funding direct services to focusing on systems change, which our organization has identified or defined as policy change, practice change, and public will change. That strategic shift has certainly been important to this organization. It's also been very important to our partners and to the field broadly. It's a shift that I think really aligns so well with our unique assets as an independent county agency, and our role as a convener and a connector and a catalyst. And as the board and the team knows, it's also been a shift that's been enormously challenging. This work by its nature is complex, especially, any type of systems change is complex, but particularly systems change where we're working to integrate and align and coordinate different types of child and family serving systems to actually work for children and families. So, so my first point, and it's one that I've emphasized with the board for the past year and a half or so, is that to do this kind of work is required and requires First 5 LA to do its work differently. If we're gonna make meaningful progress towards our goals at a system level. And I've talked specifically with the board, for us to contribute to change at a scale worthy of our county's kids. We've gotta focus and prioritize, be really clear about the work that matters most. We need to advance tighter alignment and integration, both within First 5 LA as well as with our county partners and others. And we really need to ensure that we are incorporating our values, particularly diversity, equity, and inclusion in all that we do. That leads me to my second point, which is, our implementation efforts today have really helped us to identify and lift up challenges to focus and prioritize, to align and integrate our work. And as we've been digging into what's holding us back, we've really discerned a really important overarching insight that has implications for our ability to focus and to prioritize. And that's namely, that we have a need, which we'll talk with you about this afternoon, for greater clarity in terms of what we are holding ourselves as an organizational accountable for, for achieving. So in short, we're saying, you know, we, we have some work to do to make plain what success look like, looks like, how that change occurs, and how we're gonna know whether or not we're making progress. So that's, that's like the organizational challenge in front of us, point number two. Number three is, we see a lot of urgency in this work. Greater clarity on the outcomes we're gonna relentlessly pursue, measure, and hold ourselves accountable for achieving are important for a number of reasons. Greater clarity is gonna allow us to, the organization, to more strategically focus and prioritize our work. And I think the board would agree, as the, the team believes, we are doing too much. We need to focus, not only on what we're gonna do, but also on what we are not going to do. So that what we do do, we can be doing the highest impact and contribution to change possible. Greater clarity in terms of the outcomes we're holding ourselves accountable for will also help us explore and support deeper integration and alignment grounded in a shared understanding of intentions and aspirations. Systems change is, is a team sport. And the clearer we can be about what those goals are that we're gonna relentlessly focus on, the greater our opportunity is to align intention and goals with our county partners and our community partners and more broadly. Greater clarity also will help us measure our progress. This has been a recurring theme in our conversations with the board, with the staff. It is a critical issue. And so having a clear shared understanding of the goals we are going to be pursuing and measure progress against is absolutely essential. Finally, greater clarity will also help us bring and inform our multi-year financial planning and support our responsibility as a steward of public funds in the context of declining revenues. So, the absence of sufficient clarity has some significant implications. Greater clarity will contribute for the reasons I'm touching on to, to greater impact. Finally, I want to underscore, as the board absorbs what is a lot of important and deep information, our intent is for today's conversation to be a starting point, not an endpoint. We're gonna begin by talking about our context and learning, and we want to share with the, the board some of our thinking about how we might clarify what we're holding ourselves accountable for. And do so in a way that can help us better focus and prioritize and align and integrate our work and support our ability to, to measure progress. We are gonna start with the N in mind, which is our North Star. We're gonna share some insights about the North Star and talk with the board about a proposed reframing of the North Star. We're gonna speak to the opportunities we see before us, informed by the learning and a potential reframe to the North Star. And we want to share some, some questions with you that we're wrestling with. I say to the team, inviting people into your problems is a sign of strength. And I believe inviting the board into some of the issues we're, we're wrestling with is, is an important example of how the team is genuinely interested in getting some feedback and insights. Because these are some hard issues, they aren't easy answers, there, there's not black and white solutions. But they really are reflective of some very deep and important learning from the team due to implementation experience thus far, and some important and powerful opportunities we see for us to really lean into our, our role as a strategic high-impact agent of change in those family and child-serving systems that are critical to optimizing child health, healthy child development and their overarching potential. Super proud of the team, you're gonna be hearing a lot from them in a moment, but for now, I will turn it back to the Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Executive Director. Ms. Bo, do we have any public comment on Kim's report?
There are no public comments on Kim's report.
Alright then, we will receive that report, thank you so much. Item 6 is, as I think I teed it up a little earlier, this item is required in order to consider expanding the contract that we have with Justice McGinnity Executive Search to do, in addition to the high-level searches they're conducting for us already, to allow them to conduct the search for the Executive Director. In order to do that, we need to waive our Governance Guideline Number 1 in order to do this today, and to amend and extend the agreement with Justice McGinnity. So let me turn it over to Council, because I believe this is an item that you're gonna lead us through.
Thank you Chair, I think you led us through already. The only thing I would add to, to your, to your excellent introduction of the item is that the proposed dollar amount of the addition to the contract is, the contract is $150,000 for the fiscal year, of which approximately $75,000 is expected to be used for the Executive Director search. And the amendment to the contract also includes an increase in the hourly rate, hourly rate payable to the consultant from $150 an hour to $175 an hour. And so with that, staff would recommend that the board vote with a seven of nine vote required to waive Governance Guideline Number 1 and approve the extension and amendment of the contract with Justice McGinnity Executive Search. Be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, Judy, do you see anyone who's raised their hand that wishes to ask a question or make a comment?
Romalis would like to do that.
I'm, I'm, I don't ask a question or wave my hand, I'm gonna make a motion when it's time.
Okay, anyone else that you see that wishes to speak? Ms. Bo, do we have any public comment on Item 6?
There are no public comments on Item 6.
Alright, thank you. So we have a motion from Romalis, and this would be that the board waive our Governance Guideline Number 1 and amend and extend the agreement with Justice McGinnity Executive Search to conduct the recruitment for the Executive Director and other recruitments.
And I'll second it.
Alright, it's been seconded, then let us call the roll.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
Romalis Taylor?
Yes.
Keisha Woods?
Yes.
And Sheila Kuehl?
Yes.
Motion is passed with seven votes.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, a very important step to take. Let us move on to Item 7, it's presented as a information item that we received in writing, a very, very exciting one. So, I'm going to turn it over to Reed Meadows, Senior County Strategist, but to present it, but before I do, let me just say, for those of you who don't know, Reed is leaving, and July 22nd is his last day, after five years working with us. But then, for some Uh, but then, uh, for some unnamed reason, got married and is moving to Philadelphia. Um, but this, uh, this has been an incredible five years of work, uh, standing up our relationship with various parts of LA County to work through our priorities. Um, this item is a really, really great example and a very exciting one, which I'll ask, uh, Reed to present. So let me turn it over to you, Reed.
Okay, well, thank you so much Supervisor. I was, uh, not expecting that, but thank you so much. Um, so this item is information only. We will come back to the board in September for action on this. Uh, and so this was in response to a huge influx in refugees following, you know, the humanitarian crisis in Afghanistan, subsequently Ukraine. Uh, First Five California approved funding three million statewide specifically for First Five Commissions across the state. Um, we have been participating in, uh, the LA County Office of Emergency Management put together a refugee task force. Uh, we've been participating in that and, um, we ended up, uh, at, once this RFA was released, we, uh, partnered with, uh, International Institute of Los Angeles. They are one of the LA County resettlement agencies. Uh, and we decided to apply for this funding. Uh, the, the grant is really broken down into three main categories. It's, it's intended to be, uh, gap funding. So the idea really is to connect refugees to longer-term sustainable public funding. But hopefully this funding will serve as a, a really important, um, uh, bridge funding in order to connect those refugees recently arriving with those, uh, public funding sources. So, um, IALA, International Institute of Los Angeles, is planning to offer kind of systems navigation, case management services with incoming refugees, specifically refugees with young children and their families. Uh, they will also be offering emergency childcare for ninety days, um, before they can be connected to longer-term childcare. And then, uh, there will also be some emergency housing vouchers, three months of rent, um, before they can get connected to longer-term, uh, public funding sources. So, uh, we have, um, partnered with them on this grant, um, and we were awarded it. It was competitive across the state. Um, and we will be executing or hopefully up on the board's approval in September. So, um, I think that's all I have to say.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and thank you so much for your work. Um, but counsel, I'm a little confused. This says it's an information item, but it also appears to need us to adopt a resolution to authorize the staff to execute the agreement. So do we have to vote on this or how do we authorize?
No, Chair.
The receipt of the fund.
Chair, I believe, um, the, the description of the item is just referencing, uh, for the future action, what the future action will be. So, um, it is really an information item and, and no action is needed at this time.
All right, good. And, um, Linda, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right, then we will accept this information and look forward to the future, uh, item when we're asked to say, oh yeah, we'll take the money.
Um, Supervisor, this is Dr. Hager. Can I ask one question before Reed goes to Philadelphia? Or wherever the heck he's going? Uh, so you may, you may not know, or you may know that I adopted and facilitated a family of seven out of Kabul to the, did, did you know that?
I, I did not actually.
Um, and my experience in dealing with the individuals in LA County for relocation and support was culminated in a statement by the director of this institute that said, uh, "Good luck, Dr. Hager. We expect them to spend the rest of their life living in abject poverty." And, uh, we wouldn't be surprised if they weren't under a bridge fairly soon. Um, and that kind of galvanized my psyche, as you could probably well imagine. So maybe when we go to this, and we, this brought back to the board in the fall, I would be interested in knowing in exactly what way we get to participate in a positive way to support these families. Because I was absolutely blown away by my conversation with this guy. Um, and, uh, I became a social worker for refugees for about three to four months to say nothing of their chauffeur. Um, but I mean, I really think we have to, as, as a commission, have to look carefully in terms of exactly what they're willing to do. So maybe you could pass that baton to somebody and say, I know that Dr. Hager is going to be all over this like, uh, Lind on a blue surge suit. So, uh, maybe we could prepare ourselves for the worst. All right.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Hager, and, uh, we'll absolutely pass on the baton. Um, and, uh, happy to provide extra discussion in the September board meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Astrid. I haven't heard anything about blue surge suits for such a long time. Um, all right, anything else on item seven before we leave it? Okay, thank you. Let us move on then to item eight. This is really the, the, uh, the bulk of our meeting today. And so I wanted to ask, uh, my colleagues on the board to, um, you know, be prepared to take some notes about things that you may be thinking while you're hearing the presentation. Because there will be three times that, um, our staff will pause for discussion with the board. Um, you know, Antoinette will begin and, uh, Kaia will give us an overview about what they've been thinking. Uh, with Tara leading us in discussion about, as Kim indicated, looking at our North Star and anything we may need to think of about that. Uh, we'll take a ten-minute break after those three things. And then Turner and Becca are going to lead us in a discussion as well about, you know, what problems are we trying to solve and, and how will we approach that? And then, um, then, uh, Turner will ask us to look at our focus, how we prioritize, how we measure. Uh, we'll also have a discussion on that. So there will be three times we pause for board discussion. Um, and then, uh, Antoinette will wrap it all up and close. And that will be, uh, the end of this, um, very interesting and important item. So with that, uh, let me turn it over to Antoinette, uh, to begin the presentation and the sets of discussion. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to, uh, commissioners and to my colleagues, um, our partners, um, and communities. I, um, am so eager along my colleagues to begin this conversation. So I'm going to start with some opening remarks and then we're going to, um, jump right into the conversation. Um, so just as a reminder to the board, um, the 2020-2028 Strategic Plan includes a commitment to review and refine our strategic plan every three years. And, um, 2022, 2023, which is this current fiscal year, is the third year of, of strategic plan implementation. And today, uh, represents the official launch of our very first three-year review and refinement cycle. Now, when the strategic plan was approved by the board in 2019, board members and staff understood that the work we do, um, is conducted in a very dynamic context. And that community conditions affecting children and families can change rapidly. So with this understanding that we have the foresight to build a flexibility into our strategic plan so that we can be responsive to shifts in the external environment and apply learning from implementation to achieve real and, and meaningful change for children, families, and communities. And as we now know, the context and community conditions have indeed changed rapidly and dramatically. And during our first two years of implementation, we have learned, as Kim noted, that we have to bring much sharper clarity to the organization's focus and priorities in order to contribute to outcomes that are skill-worthy of LA County's children and families. So today's conversation is a starting point for how we intend to bring sharper clarity to our focus and priorities and tell a more coherent story about the systems changes that we seek. So, uh, our intention today is to provide insight into the, into our learning and questions that we've been grappling with and invite commissioners into dialogue around refinement to our strategic plan that will help us focus and prioritize. Now, we acknowledge that there is a lot of information that we're going to share, um, during our board meeting. And actually, our chair stole my thunder. Cause I was going to tell you, there are three sections to the presentation and discussion that will help commissioners digest the information and discuss what we are, um, presenting today. So I'm just going to review, um, again, what, um, our chair shared. First, our colleagues will provide a brief overview of the strategic plan review refinement cycle and learning to date and the implications of those learnings for reframing our North Star. And after the first board discussion, there will be a break. Now, when we return from the break, we return our attention to what we see as the opportunity before us, sharing with the board the questions that, that have been guiding our thinking. And during the third section of the presentation and discussion, we will summarize the information and the implications for how we will focus, prioritize, and measure our work. Um, at this time, my colleague Kaia Tith will now move us into the exploration. Kaia?
Thank you, Antoinette, and good afternoon, commissioners, staff, members of the public. Um, as Antoinette mentioned, we're going to start our presentation first with some context setting. So what have we learned over these past two years of implementation that has informed where we start in our review or reflection, uh, of our strategic plan during this first cycle? So as a reminder, this visual here reflects our commitment to engage in that ongoing and periodic three-year review, reflection, and refinements of elements of our 2020-2028 strategic plan. And as Antoinette mentioned, this year marks, uh, the, this fiscal year marks our third year of strategic plan implementation as well as our first cycle of that three-year review and refinement cycle. And our review or refinement efforts, as Kim and Antoinette have highlighted, is grounded in our reflections and learnings from experience and data over these past two years of implementation. So what have you been learning over these past two years to inform our refinement efforts? The following are highlights of those key learnings, uh, that informs where do we start in our review or refinement of our strategic plan. So firstly, we're learning that the strategic plan has broad and multiple elements. When we developed the 2020-2028 strategic plan in 2019, as Antoinette noted, we did so with the goal of clarifying our priorities and role as agents of systems change with the understanding that systems change work is complex, it takes time, and it cannot be accomplished by a single organization. We added a time urgency to our North Star while retaining a focus on school readiness and sought to communicate a pathway for systems change that could provide that clarity, focus, and shared understanding needed so we could achieve the greatest impact possible for children, families, and communities. But what we've learned is that despite this attempt in 2019, the broad and multiple elements in our current strategic plan, such as our North Star, our results for children and family, which are outcomes, our long-term system outcomes lend itself to multiple interpretation of what we're trying to achieve and why. And therefore, it's had implication of our ability, ability to prioritize and focus, align and integrate our work. And as noted earlier, defining and measuring and commuting, communicating success. We've heard these same reflection from the board in past strategic plan implementation update presentations, uh, really wanting to hear what is the story of our impact. Secondly, we've, we've learned that systems change work requires us to be responsive and adaptable in this context of a dynamic environment and rapidly changing community conditions, as Antoinette noted. This rapidly changing context, such as the pandemic, as well as still strategic opportunities that are happening at the local and state level that we've heard a little bit earlier today, really requires us to sharpen that strategic focus and direction of our role and impact so that we could effectively respond and adapt. Thirdly, our fiscal imperative of embracing our fiscal reality adds a sense of urgency to have clarity and define our impact and unique role so that we can deploy our fiscal and human resources strategically to maximize impact. We've engaged the board in previous months on our ongoing work of aligning our long-term financial plan to our fiscal reality. We've heard that our exploration of the potential use of remaining fund balance and when to align revenues and exit expenditure needs to be grounded in the impact we're trying to achieve. So in summary, our lessons learned over these past two years is that we have, we still have insufficient clarity on what we're trying to accomplish, why, and how. And this is why our first cycle of strategic plan review refinement is that opportunity to apply what we've learned and achieve that level of clarity and focus originally sought in 2019. It is because of these learnings that we are starting our review or refinement efforts in first really bringing clarity and having that, and building that shared understanding of what are we trying to achieve and why? As Kim noted, what are the outcomes we relentlessly pursue and hold ourselves accountable for? To do this, uh, we realized we first need to start at our North Star and consider what are those opportunities to reframe our North Star so that we can orient our work to that critical, unique developmental window in the earliest years of a child's life. With that grounding of a North Star, then we, we need to have shared agreement on what is that opportunity in front of us? What's our understanding of the problem and the opportunity for us to address? And what's First Five's unique role in that opportunity? With the grounding of our North Star and, uh, the opportunity in front of us, then we can ask ourselves, what are the outcomes we relentlessly pursue and why? And so today, our work, uh, our, our presentation is focused on the two of these three areas. Our current progress to date in reframing our North Star and our, the opportunity in front of us. Our work over the summer, it will be to refine our outcomes grounded in our reframed North Star and agreement on this opportunity. So with that, I'll hand it over to my colleague Tara to share what our current work is in reframing our North Star, the why of our work.
Thank you, Kaia. So as we begin to clarify what we are holding ourselves accountable for, and in response to the learnings Kaia just shared with you, we realized the best place to start was through a review of our North Star, which reflects the why of our work or our reason for being. Our North Star currently reads, "By 2028, all children in LA County will enter kindergarten ready to succeed in school and life." And as the team processed this, we worked through a number of questions. What do we mean by ready for school, ready to succeed in school life, and what would that look like? If children need to maximize their full developmental potential before kindergarten, what is needed for that to occur? And finally, what are the broader conditions needed to support children to reach this full developmental potential? These questions and the discussion they sparked supported the following conclusion. Our North Star is heavily focused on school readiness, which is very different than children developing optimally. We're going to pause on that because that's a really big, critical conclusion group came to. And given this, the team decided a re, a reframe was warranted to better reflect the why of our performance. So again, here is the current North Star focused on school readiness and time-bound by 2028. And here is the reframe. Children will reach full developmental potential throughout prenatal to five. Changes are, are pretty obvious, I'm sure, to you, but changes we want to call out in our rationale include, first, we removed the 2028 timeframe, which was included to emphasize urgency as well as note the timeframe and date of our current strategic plan. And also was a nod to LA's role in hosting the 2028 Olympics and the anticipated focus that would come from such a major event. We removed the year as we think urgency is better fulfilled through emphasis on the earlier years, as you see with directly noting prenatal through five and this critical, unique period for children's development. Second, we shifted the focus to reaching full developmental potential throughout versus a specific point in time like entering kindergarten. Throughout versus a specific point in time like entering kindergarten. We think this reinforces that child development is a continuous process that never stops. And it also adheres to key stages of predictable growth in early childhood. And finally, we included language that speaks to the entirety of our target population prenatal to five. Pushing us to think of children at a much younger age, moving away from an orientation of an older child. Before a five-year-old entering school. This change prioritizes children at their earliest moments, acknowledging the significance of pregnancy and the first few years of life. In supporting a child's development. Many of the limitations of our current North Star. That I just highlighted, our themes commissioners have shared and wrestled with in past conversations. Our reframe reflects acknowledgement of those discussions and we think brings greater clarity on the why of our work. So as you continue to process a reframe North Star, let's consider the implications. First, a reminder of the purpose of a North Star. It serves to orient our work, but it doesn't determine the what of our work. The noted, it offers the why, a reason for being and clarifies our purpose. It's not to serve as a checkbox or a threshold for what we decide to do. The reframe also grounds our work in child development and that continuous process children experience beginning prenatally to age five. And through multiple domains, including motor, language, adaptive, social, emotional and cognitive. It uplifts the urgency of a child's first years prioritizing these earliest moments when rapid brain development is happening. That sets the foundation for lifelong learning, behavior and health. And finally, it affirms Proposition 10 statute, which clearly states our mandate of promoting, supporting. And improving the early development of children. So with that, we'd like to open it up to discussion as was mentioned before. So it's kind of our first discussion stop and hear from you commissioners. So what is resonating? Kind of what's coming up for you? What questions do you have? And we can really open it up for comments and questions.
Okay, well, since Judy can see who's raising their hands, let me ask Judy to call on people. To talk about this thoughtful adjustment. About what it is that we anchor ourselves to essentially as our purpose. What are we aiming to accomplish? What is the why of our work, as Tara has said? So Judy, do you see anyone with their hand up to kick this off?
Dr. Bird?
I don't hear.
You're on mute, Judy.
Dr. Bird's hand is up, Sheila.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes. Robert Bird, and then we have Deanne. Did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay.
Okay, let's start with Robert and then you can see if anyone else. You know, it's a lot to think about and respond to, but Robert, kick us off.
Sure, I, I, one of the things I like about the reframe is that it kind of shifts us from like. School readiness to really looking at social determinants of health or the overall, overall well-being. That will really launch a stronger trajectory, if I'm not using a better word. And kind of looking at the individual as a whole person and what contributes to wellness and well-being.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, we have Yvette and then Jackie.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I liked, I like what you said, Robert. One thing I remember from our prior iteration discussion about our North Star was that. We put the date in 2028 for a sense of urgency to sort of have something to. Drive our energy and our sort of sense of urgency, basically. So I noticed that you, you know, you took the year out. So can you, and I just, I worry that like, you know, I don't want to lose that sense of urgency that this is like, you know. So tell me how, what your approach is and your thoughts about removing the year 2028.
Yeah, we had a lot of conversation. Within understanding the 2028 wasn't getting, wasn't emphasizing that urgency or wasn't putting enough. Placement on that urgency and the focus to the earliest years prenatal shifting, right? To those early years where it is a very critical window, zero to three for early childhood development. Was what we're trying to place the urgency on. Conversation in the team was once in a lifetime opportunity essentially. And so by focusing on those earlier years and pivoting younger, can that be? Can that replace the urgency as the date wasn't necessarily fulfilling that?
Jackie?
Thank you. I, I, when I first looked at these slides, I went, wow, this is very important sort of foundation laying thinking. And I'm very much in support of moving away from a single focus on school readiness as the North Star. But I can't help myself from jumping to the accountability portion of it. And, and I think it's going to be even more challenging to figure out. Holding ourselves accountable for which aspects of. And not just conceptually, but, but realistically, given the size and scope and spread. So I just, I know we're going to take this part by part and we're going to make sure that all the pieces lead to each other. But that was my initial reaction was, wow, this is in many respects even broader. And more challenging to figure out what our unique contribution is in relationship to the. Many other partners who affect developmental potential, development and developmental potential.
Yes, there was similar sentiment in conversation within the organization of wait a minute, aren't we going broader? But I do think, and I heard you say this too, it's coming in the subsequent sections. I think you will see to your point of like, the aspects of, you know, where can we focus? Will be more clear as we move through the different pieces. So hold that comment. And I think as we get through the future sections, if you're still processing that. We will have plenty of time to discuss it again if it's still not clear to you.
Okay, Ramalas.
I'm in concert with Yvette and Jacqueline. We have to have accountability at some point. So I hear what you're saying Tara. That it's going to be covered in later discussion. But we need to really focus on what that is and how we, where are we going to target this effort? As we get on in the other ones, because accountability is key. We want to be able to tell the constituents and the state and everyone what your successes are. What we've learned and how we, where we're going. So this, this looking at it from the standpoint of what we're going to do. I like the aspect that we are focusing early. Because this is the key to changing the trajectory for children. I like the refocusing of that, but I, I think the accountability issue has got to be somewhere. And hopefully, as we go forward, you help us get to that.
I have full confidence the team will, but again. If you're still, you know, working through that question in the part three discussion, let's, let's bring it back up. But yes, it is coming. And at this point, it's really, does this reframe North Star really better clarify our why and purpose? And given the shifts and changes I walked through, does that really resonate or not with the board? So it sounds like the earlier focus on the earlier years was sitting well with you, Commissioner Taylor. So appreciate those comments and we will keep walking through the future sections again. I hope, hopefully we'll get at your questions, concerns related to accountability.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got Carol Shadala.
I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else has said. I think that the accountability issue is incredibly important, but also looking at health and mental health. Is extremely important as well. So I'm looking at accountability and hopefully we can see that when we get to the third part. As well as everyone else's concern.
Yeah, subsequently, Sharona, my colleague Sharona Woodby is going to dig into a whole child. Better, a greater description tied to whole child. And I think you'll see to your comment, Commissioner Bird, the social determinants of health and the. Mental health aspects showing up there as well.
Yeah, it's extremely important. So thank you for focusing in on that.
Okay, I, I have a couple of remarks. One is, I, I've always been uncomfortable with picking a, a year or a date when. When the work is supposed to be done. I mean, I would like to have that date be tomorrow. And, and not say that there's this period of time where it's not expected that we're going to do this work. And then on some day, then it, then we are expected to have accomplished it. This is ongoing and children keep being born, I've noticed, and they keep developing and then they move. Through their early years and, and. I, I think we, we just need to sort of acknowledge that. And I'm assuming that that's part of what your next presentations will bring for us. I, I, I really like the, the changes that you've. I guess, revealed to us so far.
And that's. Thank you, Judy. Anyone else? I'm sorry, did you want to answer first?
No, I was just saying there's nobody else with their hand up.
Okay, well, I have a few comments as well that echo in many ways my colleagues on the board. One of the things that we've been discussing over the last several months. Is a recognition that we're doing in many ways too much work. Given our declining revenue and our need to. Sort of lessen the volume, volume of it to live within our means. At the same time, as I do resonate to a change from a simply an emphasis on. At the moment that they enter kindergarten, are they ready? And of course, we've had a lot of questions about what it means to be ready and new ones during the pandemic. Should I be able to understand my teacher without seeing her mouth because she's masked, for instance? And so I like the, you know, the broadening of it. Like my colleagues though, I, I, I'm worried about it's sort of the three bears item. If we were a little too limited in our goal earlier. Are we now to diffuse? And I, I know we've said the last item is how we will focus, how we'll, we'll prioritize and how we will measure. Our, you know, success or how we've met our goal. But I guess in terms of talking about full developmental potential. And the fact, as Judy says, that the work is never over because there's always a new child. That needs these services in this age group or many of them. So I think we have indicated, seems to me, a general. Positive attitude toward not having a goal year because again, as Judy said. You know, what about the ones that come after that year? And secondly, shifting it kind of earlier in development, really even prenatal. Most people feel I think is a good use of our targeting resources. But whether we will be able to. Meet that, I guess, is what we're going to have to discuss in the next couple of. Presentations and discussions. So I look forward to that. Is there anyone else that wants to talk about this? A presentation on North Star because we're going to take a little break and come back for the next two pieces. Anyone else with their hand up, Judy?
No, no one else has their hand up.
All right, then let us take a break. Let's say for 13 minutes to 2:45. And come back altogether, don't sign off, just maybe turn your cameras off. And we'll come back into session at 2:45. Thank you.
Okay, let us gather again in front of our, um, computers and cameras and phones and things to come back, uh, into our meeting after our break. So let me hear some voices to know that people are around.
Hello.
We're here.
Here.
Hello.
We're here.
Looking good. So let us then continue with the presentation. I think, uh, Charla and Becca, you're next.
We are. We're excited. Um, so in this next, in this next section, um, we will unpack the opportunity in front of us. So to get to the framework that we will use to narrow our, um, focus and identify the outcomes that we are promising to relentlessly pursue within our strategic plan review and refinement. Um, we are exploring the whats and whys of reaching full developmental potential and clarifying the opportunity we see in front of us to collectively and relentlessly pursue. Starting with identifying what is needed for children to maximize their full developmental potential through prenatal, throughout prenatal to five. And what conditions are needed to support children reaching their full developmental potential? What helps and hinders those conditions that impact child's developmental potential? And what makes first five LA uniquely positioned for public systems change? We recognize this is largely conceptual and building toward our strategic plan refinement. Um, so hang in there with us as we walk through some of our logic and reframing the opportunity we see ahead and getting us closer to narrowing into finding our role and impact. And of course, that starts with, uh, the reorientation to a reframed North Star. And the problem that we are collectively trying to solve in the why in our systems change work. So starting with that, what children need to maximize this window of development. Um, first, recognizing that this is a critical window of development. I, I know we talk a lot about brain development, um, but there are a few key points that we are thinking about as we conceptualize full developmental potential. During this period of prenatal to five, the brain shapes keys abilities for long-term wellness, such as forming trusting relationships, being open to learning, regulating emotions, um, and that healthy, loving caregivers promote healthy development in young children. So, um, first is recognizing that within prenatal to five, that prenatal to three is especially critical window to support or influence children's development with cumulative effects that can further exacerbate poor outcomes in four and five years of age. I think really emphasizing that development is cumulative. This to me is urgency. Um, that this is a critical window of early childhood when the brain is developing more rapidly than any other time in a person's life. Um, the brain is the most plastic during this time, meaning it's the most influenced and the brain is the most adaptable to the conditions it experiences dirt through, um, this period of life, both for strengthening and for per, for outcomes. Um, prenatal to three is the window to strengthen, bolster and build resilience as in four and five years of age when, um, synapses are pruning. That was nerdy, but meaning in zero to three, we are building new connections within the brain. And in four and five years of age, we're trimming down to the strongest connections that were created during the prenatal to three time period. And it's profoundly critical and influential window of development that starts in the earliest years. So said in another way, uh, it's a window of use it or lose it. Um, I think we're also thinking about development holistically, recognizing that the multiple domains of development are interconnected. As a child develops, the skills and milestones, um, have an interdependent dynamic. So from a systems perspective and in evidence-based early childhood practices, we recognize that there is an interdependence of developmental domains. And we know that a change in one area of development influences a change in the other, that the domains, um, are interlinked and interrelated so that as a child progresses in one domain, it influences the progress in other domains of development. For example, that fine motor skills have an impact on cognitive skills as problem solving is central to children's intrinsic curiosity to explore, to master movement and to take the risks needed to learn. And we know that gross motor skills like crawling have a big impact on both receptive and expressive language. That there is a strong relationship, um, especially with children with autism spectrum disorder between motor skill development, um, on social interactions. And that there are sensitive developmental time periods, especially in the first three years of development, while the brain and neural system are making connections so quickly that it's a unique window to influence and strengthen. Um, although skills within domains are interrelated, the process and rate of development varies within and across domains. So it's common that development in one domain may be predominant over skills in the other domain. For example, a motor skill such as walking might seem to be dominant for a time, um, followed by a period of language development, but we know that this period, um, that during this period, skills are interdependent and reinforcing. So when we build strengths, we strengthen the next milestone. And when there is a deficit in one area, it can have a snowball effect into other domains of development. Um, we also recognize that young children are especially vulnerable to the conditions in their lives and their interactions with key caregivers. A child can't fully learn, develop optimally without addressing and understanding the context in which, um, a child lives and grows and develops. Um, and that health and wellbeing are critical to successful learning. Trauma and adverse experiences negatively impact a child's ability to learn and can disrupt optimal development. And we know that systemic inequities powerfully disrupt developmental potential. That systemic inequity hinders the outcomes of children before birth. So recognizing this is a unique window of development that is wild and profound. Um, what is needed for children to maximize their full developmental potential throughout prenatal to five? I'm gonna say it again, but like, we know this is a unite, unique period of development. We also know that what children need to optimally develop or to maximize the full developmental potential, we know it requires safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments. Children need primary attachment and consistent routines. They need the space and environments for physical play and for sensory experiences. They need stable, predictable and responsive interactions with caregivers. Meaning healthy and responsive caregivers promote healthy development in young children. Um, and we recognize that child's wellbeing is fundamentally reliant on the healthy wellbeing of the family in which they live. And this perspective is informed by the protective factors framework, social determinants of health and adverse childhood experiences work. That children's optimal development requires secure attachment with adults, stability and nurturing interactions, and these ingredients for children to reach their full potential are found within families that themselves are supported by the community and environment around them. Parents and caregivers must feel confident in their parenting and see their choices are respected um, by the important messengers that interact with them and their children. And moreover, family wellbeing is equally reliant on children's wellbeing. Um, families with children who are struggling are likely to struggle themselves. Next, there we go. Um, our next question then is what conditions are needed to support children in reaching their full developmental potential? Or what conditions are needed so that families can provide those safe, stable nurturing relationships and environments? Um, so as we consider and orient to our reframe North Star, we center the care and development of a growing child as well as the stability and strength of the family, including income supports, employment and the physical behavioral wellbeing of all the members of the household. Um, our prenatal to family focus also considers the community that built environments affect, uh, families and child's health and health prospects. And that conditions that impact child development are also interrelated. We know parents want what's best for their children. And sometimes conditions families experience limit their ability to provide safe, stable nurturing environments. We hear this from our communities work consistently that LA County, county families are greatly impacted by the conditions and the context that families experience. So we recognize that the conditions for the family and community can influence or disrupt optimal development. We know this isn't an exhaustive list of conditions that are needed to provide those safe, stable environments. Um, and that's particularly true in families of color that are exposed to systemic and pervasive inequities and discrimination. We know that optimal child development involves a whole family wellness approach that includes systematic attention to the parent's well-being and the psychological needs. And must be an approach that fosters dignity, bonding, healing within the context of creating empowered communities. So as we think about the framework we are developing, we're also thinking about the conditions that help or hinder development. And that all conditions or population outcomes, as we may frame it, um, can be framed and understood at each level, at the individual child, family and community levels as well. Um, and I will hand it to my brilliant and talented colleague Becca Patton to walk us through more of our role and the opportunity ahead of us.
Ooh la la, uh, thank you, my equally brilliant colleague Sharna. Um, so we're gonna now move into sort of our next question. So as we look at those conditions, what helps or hinders the conditions that support families and therefore impact children's full developmental potential? So if we look at those conditions surrounding families and communities, we know that behind those uh conditions is a public system shaping the condition. And public systems can either help or hinder these conditions. They can make the condition worse, or they can help the condition improve. Families can either experience economic security or economic insecurity. However, um, often our public systems uphold systemic bias and inequities, which actually burden families and make it difficult for children to reach their full developmental potential. As Sharna said, sometimes the conditions families experience limit their ability to provide those safe, stable nurturing environments. We also know that historically, public policies and the public systems those policies create have contributed to systematic disadvantages and inequities for families of color. Structural racism in the United States has led to deeply rooted inequities and injustice, resulting in families living in poverty. And these institutionalized inequities rooted in systemic racism shaped the shaped the conditions that burden these families. For example, undermining access to stable housing, good-paying jobs, healthy food, healthcare and other services and supports that promote well-being. We know family stability is impossible without sufficient income to adequately house and feed the family. And too many LA County families suffer from household instability related to low income. And lastly, as Sharna mentioned, incredible development happens prenatal to three. And as Tara said, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to support a child's development. All public systems that nurture children must recognize and address the disproportionate impact of racism and systemic bias on children of color and children in poverty, prioritizing those earliest moments. We know that disparities can begin before birth, and we know that prioritizing the earliest moments prenatal to three can reduce those disparities. Okay, now let's put this all together um to think about our opportunity in front of us. So we have, as Tara um spoke about, our refamed North Star that says that we are aiming for children to reach their full developmental potential consistently, because we know about the interdependence of development, so consistently throughout that unique window of prenatal to five. And we know that child's children's development is rooted in whether or not children experience nurturing, safe relationships and environments. We believe that families and caregivers want what is best for their children, and so therefore, parents and caregivers need to be supported. Certain conditions support families and caregivers and providing those relationships and environments that children need to develop. And the public systems behind these conditions can either burden or unburden families as they care for their children. So the opportunity before us at First Five LA is to shift public systems so they prioritize the critical developmental window of prenatal to three in order to reduce disparities by mitigating the effects of systemic racism, bias and intergenerational poverty that families experience. Or said another way, public programs and systems should support the interconnection and mutual strengthening of both the family's health instability alongside the child's development in the five domains. Social, emotional, cognitive, adaptive, language, motor and physical health. Risk of poor outcomes and not a specific diagnosis or means test should drive early childhood systems and interventions, recognizing the unique opportunity to reach young children and their families during this critical window of brain development and build and amplify strength and resilience from the earliest moments. Okay, so that is a very large opportunity in front of us. But why First Five LA? What makes us uniquely positioned to work on public systems change? First, um, as Tara mentioned, Prop 10 was created to optimize children's development through charge to coordinate and integrate public systems. So it is the mission set out before us. Second, we now have a long-term history of systems change work. Third, and maybe most importantly, we're uniquely positioned within the ecosystem. We are an independent public agency. So as a public agency, we too are part of the public systems and can work closely with our public system partners as we work together to eliminate disparities for children and families. However, unlike our public system partners, as we our independence and charged by Prop 10 to focus specifically on child development gives us the opportunity to be flexible and creative. And lastly, our over forty years of experience means that we have a lot of learning, sometimes from our mistakes, sometimes from our successes, um, but we've really learned a lot about what works and what doesn't. So as we did before, we're going to pause here for discussion. Our next section after this part um is going to be a presentation that dives into how we focus, prioritize and select specific public system outcomes that we will relentlessly pursue. Um, but before we get to that, we want to pause here. There's a lot of information, so as you think about sort of this new framework to guide our work um and our unique position to execute on that work, want to open it up to questions that you may have or to hear what resonates with you.
Hey Judy, do you see anyone who has raised their hand to start this discussion?
Not right now. I think people are pondering. So I look at their faces.
Yes, I think there's
Jackie, Jackie has finished pondering. She knows what she wants to say.
Uh, I'm in the middle of pondering, um, but I just, but I have a a question, because I certainly don't disagree with what you've laid out. Um, it it was when we got to the point of shift public systems that I was like. Help me think about that. We we partner with public systems, we are um able to bring what that's not easily found already in the public agency conversations, the I mean, I I would just go straight to, I I think where First Five has been most successful is genuine partnerships with agencies and systems that are moving in a direction anyway. And where First Five can bring additional expertise or research or boots on the ground or hand connect to community-based groups in a way that, you know, it's hard for public systems. It is that the kind of thing you're thinking about, or is there something else here that's that's coming up later that I I just haven't like put together yet?
Yeah, I I think you um tapped into sort of that that unique positioning we have. So we do have some of that creative creativity and flexibility that we can bring as sort of an an extra layer of support to our public system partners. Um, the other piece um that we'll get into sort of later in the presentation and sort of where our thinking has been headed is how do we also help our public system partners potentially integrate and align? Um, so thinking through how that, what that piece could look like for us, this First Five LA is something else we're just starting to explore.
And Ramalas.
Yeah, I'm, I I I see a unique opportunity to help public systems think outside of the box. Because public systems are vetted in doing ways, business the way they've been doing it. Rather than looking at other options and opportunities to do it differently with a greater outcome. So the the strength of us having data and creating out outcomes. And that concept comes in what we've been doing under modeling uh systems changes and then working with the collaborative partners to integrate that into a change and how the practices of what they do affect these children zero to five. An example of that is we've been modeling home visitation and then our collaborative partners see the benefit of that. But we need to connect that to the children zero to three, so they understand how effectively they're making a difference as well and how children are developing in this collaboration around home visitation. And what it means when you do that investment uh for the outcomes of families. So therefore, going back to Jacqueline, I think the data will help them even more trip move forward in changing their systemic systems. Because what it is, is the system is doesn't have the ability to look at itself and say, am I doing what it is? The job they're doing is this route process versus outcome changing. So they have, you know, we can help them see the difference. The example, the other example I look at is Help Me Grow. Because none of the systems are looking at how to help the family get to where they need to do to change whatever happens in the trajectory of children. And getting them to collaborate with us to see that, how it works and what can be doing and doing the modeling of it is the key to helping them see it, us see it and the world to see. That doing it differently will help the children even more. And then there's a collaborative success versus an individualized success. So in joining them in the success of the change is going to be very important as you move forward. So I I'm 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 excited. I like it. That's just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Astrid.
Yes, I I'm fascinated by this for many reasons, but one, I would like to bring up the fact that when we listen to uh what we're talking about in terms of uh supporting families, we're looking at a intact family or a family where the child is in a nuclear family, and I want to bring up the fact that we haven't really considered how do we support kids in foster care? And uh with that same uh level of of need, maybe a bigger level of needs, we're looking at an incredibly high percentage of children that have been exposed prenatally to drugs and alcohol. So I I I um I would like to think about that, and we have twenty-three thousand kids in foster care. I I would like to talk, I would like to think about how do we support them in foster care? I agree that supporting the family is critically important. Um, working with a group of people throughout the county to figure out how to help kids in yeah, stay with our nuclear family and our, one of our mottos is to assess a family to sustain the child and the family rather to, rather than to remove the kid. So in other words, we'd like to figure out the the factors that we could bring to a family when they're identified at risk, so the kid can stay in the in their own family. And that's obviously what we were just talking about, and I agree with all of that. Um, obviously, isolation is a huge issue and loneliness is a huge issue in my field and and breeds uh a lot of of disruption uh and 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 uh and abuse and neglect and all that. So I I'm I don't want to forget the kids that are not in their nuclear home so that we can um, you know, do something for them. I think the other issue and and Ramalas and I have repeatedly touched on this, well, all of you have, is the idea of of the quality of care. And um that, you know, that the fact that they have access to certain services does not mean quality of services. And I personally, you all have heard this, it's my my little soapbox here, is I would like to see us advocate for the best of services for those groups that are highest risk. And looking at um, uh, you know, it was it was my Beyonce clinic idea in South Central, the idea that everybody wants to go there and participate and get the best services that we then begin to see the ability to assess to sustain. If we routinely evaluate to remove, these kids are all going to end up in in a juvenile justice system and in San Quentin. I wanted to see what we do to strengthen the family. And then if they do get removed, that we're looking at ways to move them back in the family and in their community, rather than having them become permanent wards of the state. We have failed these kids that are in foster care. Completely and totally failed them and their families. So let's advocate for those little tiny kids. And finally, I am so validated in talking about the kids and from prenatal. Because then that brings in my whole obsession with FASD. That's only getting worse, by the way, and um that the fact is that we recognize that brain damaged children are not easily prepared for school. So that's what I'm, that's my entire dissertation for today uh in July, so. Uh, thanks for your um fabulous report, and I agree with what you're saying, and I'm glad we're taking this stand at this point.
Thank you so much.
So I wanted to add in a just a couple of thoughts. Um, I agree with everything that everybody has said so far. Um, one of the issues that I think families uh of all kinds come up against is that that the complication of getting to the services that they need is way beyond how their ability to figure it out. That they are in need and they need help now, and they don't need a master's degree in the different kinds of systems and how to access them. And I don't know what First Five can do about that, but it seems to me that's one of the challenges. And it isn't only within the county, it's it includes the state and the federal programs at which all have different requirements and different processes to access. And I don't know how you can help, but this is a, this is a major, major problem for um, not only zero to to uh five, but even beyond. Ramalas and Astrid.
Okay, uh, Astrid is hitting the nail right on the head. The issue is there is sometimes in systems systemic gaps. And you guys have really uh identified that in Help Me Grow. When you do the assessment and you get the child to the appropriate services they need, if it's uh regional center and things like that, so there's a warm handoff. So the family who don't know, doesn't have to try to figure out something, they will never understand uh these systems. But they have somebody that navigates that and gives them a warm handoff. So there's a transition from one assessment to the services they really need and the help they need. And then that need has to be the quality of service that we expect for any child. You know, so the the issue is is uh helping systems understand that there's a gap in the services. I'll give you an example, uh, Astrid is dead on. Where child welfare fails is between investigation and services. There is no service. And what happens is that same person which could be investigated for thirty days, sixty days or even ninety days. If you don't give them any help and you're seeing them struggle, the end result is you could get a re-referral while you're investigating. So the end result is we have to help systems stop just doing enforcement, but understand that when you see some help, give help. And how do you do that? And how do you bridge that gap? So there was a thing that says there has to be an intermediary service to fill the gap. So there is no need to take it the child away, but the services are right up front, getting the services as the investigation is going on. Because what is struggling on is abject poverty and the frustration of what do I do and how do I do it? And they don't know. They just don't know. So the end result, whether they're an immigrant, whether they're an American citizen, a lot of our citizens don't know how to get help, where to get help and where to get help from, because we don't teach them that in school. We don't give it to them. So the end result is is that they 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 go into this chaos and on a cycle of helplessness and becomes more traumatic. So I'm just saying, we may want to help our systems people to see the gaps and understand how to fill it. and understand how to fill it so we can do better versus what they've been doing. And then so the system stops saying, it's not my problem to help them once I investigate. It's their problem for the backend. No, it's a problem from the beginning to the end. And you can't drop the ball in the middle. You have to fill it and help. So that you don't exacerbate the situation for families. It's just so that, and I look at foster care as an intermediary media mentoring of families. So they don't just say, yeah, it's not my problem to mentor. They need to be mentoring these families and giving them the help they need. Because investigating and detaining is not the solution. The solution is help and mentoring and support. And we reduced, and I'm going to say it again, the number of children going into child welfare by changing the system by fifty percent. Helping them upfront, not after that.
I wanted to add something to that, Ramalas, because I'm, I'm very concerned about the lack of, of follow-up and care that I see in foster care. And, you know, the sort of the abdication of responsibilities for improving the outcomes. I would like to, I would be happy to invite a staff member from First Five here on Tuesday afternoon from two to four. When a, a group of concerned providers, you know, nonprofits, et cetera. And, and, and foundations are gathering to talk about how we can in fact impact change for these kids and, and provide a, a network of services that are not being provided by the system right now. So if somebody wants to come, they can let me know. I'm happy to have them here. I, I'm, I think that the other thing that we're working on is to create a clearinghouse of information. As you said, Judy, so that everybody can easily access the services that they need without having an advanced degree in, in that process. And, and I would love to see a Yelp-like system and that responds that the, the people that access the service get to rate it. So that we, we end up encouraging those who are doing a good job to continue to do so. But all of that is, is right now boiling to the surface with many, many, many people in the community that have tried to help these kids and these families and feel frustrated by the system. So if somebody wants to come and be frustrated along with us, two to four at VIP. And of course, you're all invited on the twenty-fifth to my mural with Getty. That's, that's interesting. But the idea, we, it's very easy to get here. I'm sure somebody at, at First Five can tell you how to find me. But I mean, the idea is that we want to have a debate and we want people to be there who actually want to do things, not just talk about it. So, Ramalas, if you want to come, you can come.
No more hands up.
Okay, so then I will add just my thoughts about this section and then go on to our last section. The interesting thing about doing systemic change work is figuring out what constitutes a system. People use the word system a lot. The system does this and the system doesn't do this. But the truth is, there are probably fifty thousand systems that impact a person's life. They are often not connected and don't see themselves as a system. And then, of course, a number of things outside the system where when we identify what we call systemic racism. We know that it's been embedded in those aspects of our lives that have power. But it's also embedded across such a broad frame. That if we were saying, what problem are we trying to solve? Systemic racism. I don't think we have enough money. And maybe, maybe enough time altogether, but. So the question is, what system or what systems? Because each of them would be impacted in a different way. And I look forward to the conversation about focus. Because in a way, that is really where the rubber hits the road. Where we want to make an impact not by being so diffuse. When we were trying to figure out how to do systemic change about domestic violence. One of the areas that we identified was that law enforcement didn't care at all. So we had to impact what was then called the justice system. But that was more than law enforcement. That was also the courts and perhaps DAs who were prosecuting women for fighting back. And eventually, it looked like we actually had to work to change the law. Because the system of the law did not serve our clients and the people in whom we were interested. So when we look at our, the population that we're interested in. The, the parents in, in terms of prenatal needs and all the way to adequate resources. We have a lot of partners, but we do not have any control over any of those systems. So the question of how do you convince a system to change itself? Is the work of systemic change. How do we, when we can't make them do it? How do we then find the levers? And I think that that is what we have tried to do in our major programs. And I assume what we will continue to do. So I'm happy then to move on, Charmitt, to the next item. Because I think we've all been thinking, how will we focus? How will we prioritize and how will we know if we're at all successful? Which I think is the next section, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it is. At least teed it up for us.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so as we have heard, but also been exploring with you today. This can feel like a really large opportunity and a broadening in some ways from our previous North Star. As you all have flagged throughout our conversation today as well. So we want to have some discussion about how this reframe within our strategic plan will start to help us focus, prioritize, and measure our work. So this slide takes the next step into giving us a pathway to prioritize and focus. All of this is setting the stage or setting the organization to have more clarity. And this is largely a conceptual framework and orientation, but it will support our strategy refinement and help us make decisions as we prioritize and measure our impact. So starting with, we will orient our work to the North Star. But recognize that the North Star is what we navigate towards. It's the why of the work. It gives us our bearings and helps us steer toward prevention and building strength within families and strengths within systems, orienting to the earliest moments. And recognizing that this is a unique window of intergenerational influence and also an orientation to look upstream as possible. The North Star is an orientation and does not decide the what of our work. The framework that we are building, this framework in totality, will decide and refine the what of our work. The North Star keeps us aimed toward the unique window, window of prenatal to five years R and keeps us looking upstream. So in our last section, we listed a not exhaustive list of conditions that help or hinder child development. But we will select and monitor conditions that have the most impact on child development and where we think we have the most opportunity to influence. Because we know conditions impact children and families and caregivers and communities in big and complicated ways. We need to prioritize for the most opportunity for impact as we define our role and focus. We will monitor chains, changes in the selected conditions that enable the safe, stable nurturing, responsive relationships and environments for children. And these conditions will also inform us on LA County well-being and what families and communities are experiencing over time. So to shift those conditions that we end up selecting. We will then select the public systems that shaped those prioritized conditions and measure public systems outcomes to track our progress. These public system outcomes will be the outcomes that we relentlessly pursue. This is where we see our accountability for impact. In our work and strategy refinement, we will prioritize and deploy strategies in order to achieve those identified public system outcomes. So this is our reaffirmation and litmus test that we are doing systems change work. Our strategies will be aimed within public systems, which include partners, community-based organizations, agencies, funding streams, programs, policies, norms, that are all the dynamic players within public systems. And we will focus our attention, expertise, and activities to maximize impact toward our public system outcomes. And that means building on positive, prevention-focused approaches in the earliest moments. So children and families are supported seamlessly. And also to reduce the need for interventions to maximize children's developmental potential from the earliest moments. And I think our last discussion really was helpful in clarifying system barriers and how we as First Five LA are uniquely situated at the intersections of public systems. And we offer the partnership and the rocket fuel to shift systems. So families, caregivers, and children experience seamless supports and strengths.
Thank you, Sharna. So as you know, this is the first step as we enter our first strategic plan review and refine cycle. We've learned a lot about how complicated and messy systems change work is. And have come to understand the importance of us narrowing and focusing our efforts so that we may have the largest potential impact. As we reflect on these learnings, we have shared our thinking to date in this presentation and discussion. We are going to shift into our final discussion now. But in summary, before we do that, just want to give a quick summary. So as Tara mentioned, our reframed North Star directs our attention to supporting a child's full developmental potential. Our understanding is that children need safe, stable, and nurturing relationships and environments from the earliest moments. And families want what is best for their children, but are often limited by the conditions surrounding communities. We know that public systems are at play in shaping these conditions. And we will be making decisions on strategies focused at public systems to shift those conditions for families. So now that you've heard sort of our thinking to date. What resonates with you? What questions do you have? What would you suggest we keep in mind as we continue our refinement? Particularly as we zero in on conditions and the public system shaping those conditions?
I hear a lot of thinking going on.
No hands, but a lot of thinking. I, I can see it on people's faces.
Well, let, let me say, and this is not to close off any avenues. But one of the things that in public policy I have found the most difficult is sort of at any decision point. We, let us say we all agree that there need to be resources given to families so that we don't remove children, which was mentioned by a couple of my colleagues. But we also, you have indicated that we want to devote ourselves to the most nurturing environment early on. That really in itself is the intersection of the problem with the child welfare system. Where we imagine that we must offer services. And that was systemic change. But, you know, at what point are we concerned about the child's safety? And not able to guarantee it? The public policy, it, it's often very difficult to say to a system, here's how we want you to change. When, if you talk to anyone who is a juvenile court judge or a dependency judge where they see the kids one at a time. It's so different. However, I do understand that we want to work so that these systems will understand the, the need and the impact of their actions. And that I, I think would be a Herculean but doable task for us. And one of the things that I've heard identified today. All of that, we should give you all time to think about what you were going to say.
I'm waiting to see somebody's hand go up, but that has not happened. Ah, Ramalas.
I'm going to jump right in here. I think we have to look at how successful we've been in modeling systems change as a collaborative construct by our partners as to doing the change and getting the will for change. We're not dictating as much as we're saying, we think there's a better way and then we need to model it. And then we need to capture the data to prove that it works. And we've done that in many different ways and, and many different systems. And first, proof of concept, which you have done very effectively in the past. To prove that doing it a different way has a greater impact and how the results for children and families. So the idea is, we need to think of, what does that look like? How can we partner with him? How can we help fill the gap? Because sometimes government, because of the rules and regulations, doesn't allow them to do it the way it could be done or should be done. It, it creates its own barrier because of the laws and the rules and the regulations. So we have to do a pilot and a model that proves doing it differently can then subsequently change the laws and the rules and the regulations to do it better and do it differently. And, and especially in, in this area of zero to the three. And how does that look? What does that look like? What does it mean? And what can we do? And that means getting everybody at the table, not just the, the law, the enforcement system, but everyone. How can it be done better? What can be done? Get the professionals and everybody at the table to talk about it. And be open to say, what does that model look like? What it can do? How can we capture the data to prove that what we're thinking of doing has the outcomes we think it will have for the benefit of children and families? The hardest thing is, you can't expect a person coming here as an immigrant to understand our rules and regulations and laws. So they come from a different culture and what they thought over there was okay, was okay, but not here. And so how do we help educate them that that doesn't work here? And this is the difference in the change and what you need to do. And their willingness, believe it or not, to change to meet our requirements is unbelievable. But we have to be open that this is how to do it and this is the way to do it. And so I'm, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I know you guys are going to come up with the solution of the strategies. But I think this collaboration that you've done in the past and the way you've done it is going to be that across all those domains and spectrums that affect these children. And we are doing different models for different domains. And I will go back and throw out Help Me Grow as one of those. I will go back and throw out home visitation, welcome baby, and all those things. We're modeling concept, proof of concept. And once those proofs of concepts are proven, and we're doing with our collaborative partners. The end result is we're getting positive outcomes. And that means our partners are willing to make change. And but we've had to go back and do what? Change the laws, change the rules, change the regulation to allow these systems to do it better. You know, and do it differently. And I think it's a systemic thing up and down the line. It's not one shot takes all. So it's looking at the whole thing and saying, what is it that we need to change to make it better to do it? And what is needed, especially in these communities of color that, that don't have that benefit?
Okay, Jackie.
Just another potential area.
Just another potential area for piloting, I think you guys certainly know about, which is that the data we usually rely on to show change are not positively focused. They are residual data, legacy data systems in these public agencies that are who knows why they've all developed the way they have. But you get to this point of but how do we show change when the people who are delivering the service aren't measuring things that way, et cetera, right? I just think, and it occurred to me because Ramalas keeps saying, and I think quite rightly, that we've learned some good lessons, particularly from our home visiting work over time, and are starting, I think, to learn it around Help Me Grow, but that's another really big issue here where maybe First Five can help to engage some people in how do you know success when you see it? Well, it's in foster care, for example. It's not just counting those who had a case opened and those who got referred to something, not, don't even know exactly what, and those who went into out-of-home care, right? There's, each system has its own examples, but I just think that's another piece of the puzzle. We really need your guys' brilliant brains on to help us think about what could we demonstrate and how could we demonstrate a different way of tracking change that really does focus on the safe, stable, supporting aspects and not just on the the problem aspects?
I call it measuring widgets rather than measuring outcomes. I don't want to sit down and say I had ten home visits. What does that mean? Nothing. If you can't tell me what was the result of that visit, and did it affect a change in how the family functions? And what were the connections that were made? So we have to come up with better ways to measure the outcomes and get our partners to see, this is a better way to measure it. And if they don't have the system like we've been doing on Home Help Me Grow, we're developing the systems. ECE, we're developing the systems to capture data that is more meaningful, that has more outcome-driven meaning that is directly related to what we're doing. And so we have to do that, and that may mean changing the laws of what government measures versus what they're doing. Because they're measuring, oh, you had ten visits. For what? If you don't measure what the result of the visit was and how it changed how the family functions, then it means nothing.
Okay, we've got Carol with her hand up.
This discussion is so exciting. Thank you, Jackie and Ramalas. I totally agree. So we're really looking at objectives that measure change, not just counting numbers for numbers sake. So I'm hoping that we can be forerunners in that area that, as you say, Ramalas, it may be changing the law, but what a delight that would be in terms of really looking at what's working with families as opposed to we're just visiting families or we're counting numbers. Thank you for bringing that up.
Deanne, did you want to say something?
Well, first of all, I would like to take credit for everything that's been said before me. I'm right in there. I'm very pleased with the new focus. It's great, and everything that's been said. For the record, I said it because I totally agree. I want to emphasize a couple of things, and that is this important prenatal and postnatal, perinatal period where the most important developmental stage for a child is, of course, pregnancy. And then the most high-risk day in a child's life is the first day of life. And I can't tell you how many times we have reviewed awful outcomes, tragic outcomes, and we find that this baby at the time of birth was not only unwanted, but did not bond, did not, was not received in a way that clearly one would assume would lead to a healthy outcome. We just reviewed a case of a mother who brutally beat her four-year-old to death in front of her two little boys because she never wanted a girl. And back, looking back at the birth record, she said that at the time this child was born. So we have to also be aware that there are those risk factors that are reality, and we do need a a system to avoid and prevent those awful outcomes. And by the way, we have, for those of you who haven't seen our 30-year report, we have reduced the fatal outcomes by 70% just by reviewing these cases and seeing what the risk factors were. And by the way, bringing the system together to feel empowered to do something about it. So I wanted to mention, talk about the system because that's what I do. I bring the system of many, many different disciplines, local, national, international, and the difference that it makes with, in terms of the effectiveness of the outcomes, is if the different representatives or people from the different systems feel like they are empowered to make a difference. What happens when they aren't, when you're not all at the table, when they're not all a part of the answer, is they they hold their cards to their chest. We have problems with information sharing on cases where a child's outcome could have been profoundly different if one agency had just talked to the other. I think that, I mean, we talk about 9/11 being the prime example of failure to share information with a very bad outcome. So I would just say that I'm taking all this to heart because I truly hope it can be a part of promoting this vision that we have now to bring the system together and to look at the opportunities that are there. As Ramalas, Astrid, and others have said, those opportunities aren't there for all families. They just aren't. And so how can we realistically promote the healthy development of a child when those resources just are either not there or the family has no idea how to access them? I want to emphasize too that we need to promote the role of extended family and the community in the development of the child. It isn't always going to be a system, an agency, or an organization. It's going to be whatever it takes to prevent the isolation of that family, which as we say, and Astrid can confirm this, isolation is the number one risk factor for children. And family and community support is the number one positive influence on the development of children. So I also want to say that we haven't mentioned much about health, not, we haven't focused on the medical and pediatric component of whatever is the system and the family's access to that. It's a reality that there's a very, very big difference between the kind of healthcare or medical treatment a child will receive in one part of our county and another part of our county from one family with, at a certain economic level, and another family who's struggling just to stand in line at a clinic, frankly. I know that there, believe it or not, there are parents and people in our county who are sitting up all night with IVs in their arms at the county hospital. Literally, this is happening at this point in time because the medical, the healthcare system in one part of her county is so different from the healthcare system in another part of our county. So not everybody is a brilliant creative and sensitive and insightful medical doctor, like the ones like Astrid Hager. I don't know, we have any other medical doctors? But, and I marry to one, and they're great, but that's not the case with our whole medical system, and it's not just the medical doctors. It's the entire healthcare system, the duelists, the the home care specialists. And then I have to end with my big shout out for home visitation. Yay! So wonderful to hear about the financial support that's coming from the state. And so I'm so happy that we're working now together to try to promote an expansion of home visiting. I believe that that is probably the most effective, from my perspective, way in which we can concretely and actually make an immediate difference in the lives of families with very young children. So shout out for that, and thank you so much for broadening the vision beyond being ready for kindergarten to assessing each stage in the development of the child and recognizing the very early years as being so important. So again, let me say again, I know different agencies and different systems, I've worked with them for decades. If they're all feeling a part of it, if they're at the table, if they see that what they're doing makes a difference, then they will participate. If not, they become silos. So, thank you. That's my dissertation for the day for July, so.
Astrid, you had your hand up and now you took it down.
I took it down because when I was, I didn't want to sully any warm comments that Deanne made about me. So I'm just now going to remain silent for fear that I have to, you know, she's going to have to retract all of her statements, but I agree with that. I'm just saying that thus, Judy, I talk about my fiance clinic. It's the idea of being the absolute best care for those who have never had it, period. And that's something we have to take a stand on, that these kids actually have the best care. And then I will be silent now.
Okay, there are no other hands up right now.
Thank you. And Judy, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think it's all been said.
Okay, well, I want to thank everyone, especially the staff who presented and the staff who backed up the staff who presented, for this refresh, essentially, to look at what we've been doing, what it might take to do it better. My very favorite thing is centering the child themselves in terms of our North Star. Because one of the things that always gave me pause about school readiness was there was a school and we were making them ready for that school, which didn't necessarily reflect their own, as we would now say, developmental potential. So I think shifting to that with the child as the center, a truly child-centered approach is a very important shift for us. Not that we didn't always mean that anyway, but to see what it takes, because it may take different things for different children. And I don't mean may, I should probably say it does. So thanks very much to my colleagues for a continuously thoughtful contribution to every meeting and really stepping up, giving feedback, praising, which is very important for our staff and everybody to hear. So I think that we will look forward to the next, not waiting three years, but the next piece to see what this means in terms of making concrete each of these areas. As Ramala said, you know, what, how shall we model? And taking all of this into account, but mainly a lot of thanks to everyone. I believe that closes this unless we have public comment.
Actually, Sheila, we do have a couple of closing comments and next steps from Antoinette to wrap it all up.
All right, thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Antoinette, back over to you.
Oh, thank you. Well, we really appreciate this conversation. It reflects a lot of the deep conversations and thinking that we as staff have also been having internally, and it reminds me of, now I guess we can say the good old days of having board retreats, where we would have all been in person having this conversation. But we attempted to do a retreat-like conversation with the board and just really appreciate the engagement and thought partnership. Two really important next steps for us, of course, we're going to be reflecting on what we're hearing today, but two really important next steps for us are to engage external partners, communities, and system leaders. Like commissioners, we also feel that there's got to be conversations to really test our thinking and our assumptions and to build some shared understanding and commitment for the direction that we would like to go as First Five LA. So having those kinds of conversations is going to be really important, and we're going to be turning our attention to that over the coming months. In addition to that, as Sharna laid out with this reframed pathway, we need to get clearer around the outcomes that we are going to prioritize at that public systems level. So that is the work that we'll also be doing over the summer. And when we come back to the board in the fall, we will bring to you some initial thinking around refinements to the strategic plan building from this conversation. And there are some other interrelated things that we'll be bringing to the board, such as our DEI recommendations, which interestingly, one of the things that we've been exploring from a DEI perspective is, are we able to communicate what we, what our strategic direction actually is? And is there shared understanding and commitment around a set of outcomes in a way that helps to partner more powerfully with various groups? And so consistent with that DEI recommendation, we are continuing to deepen our own understanding, do engagement, and then we'll come back to the board in the fall to share other recommendations. In addition to that, we'll share progress on our data strategy and measurement plan, and we'll also come back to the board around potential uses of the remaining fund balance. We're seeing all of this as interconnected. Every conversation that we have, everything that we do, should be moving First Five LA towards its strategic direction. And as we talked about, towards the changes that we seek for children, families, and communities by focusing in on public systems. So that's what's coming up. We have a lot more work ahead of us. As we said earlier, this is a beginning point that we're engaging you in. We've already started having these conversations fairly recently, and we wanted to invite the board into our initial thinking before we get too far down a path. So again, we appreciate the board, and I'll turn it now back to the chair for any additional discussion or questions.
Thank you. Has anyone had any second, third, or fourth thoughts that they want to share before I call for public comment? Okay, hearing none. Linda, is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right, I want, as I said, to thank everyone and not repeat what I said before the close. So let us then move to general public comments for items not on the agenda. Or has anyone signed up for public comment on just generally?
Confirming there are no general public comments either.
All right then. My deepest thanks to the board, to Kim and the entire staff for this thoughtful refresh and the presentation. It's unusual in many ways to be so self-reflective and yet not just totally self-focused. I think it's an extraordinary time for us and real opportunity to help those about whom we care most. And the board has been very thoughtful in your approach, and we, I assume, will continue to be. So let us keep in touch with each other and take care. And with that, I will And with that, I will, unless anyone else wants to say anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.